We'll call this meeting to order.
Okay. On the roll, Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Fouch?
Here.
And Height?
Present.
Aquram is present.
Thank you. We start all meetings with a prayer and a pledge. You're invited to join us. And this will be led by Alderman Fouch?
He did it last week, last meeting.
Is it our turn?
Well, it's the mayor's fault, but he's not doing it himself.
Whose turn is it? Is it? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together tonight in this great hall to conduct the city's business, and we pray that our words, our thoughts, our actions will be pleasing in your sight. Lord, we also lift up all of our armed forces, all of our uniformed personnel, and pray that you protect them in all that they do. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm moved.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, including the special call. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Before we call the communications, I'd like to just take a little brief moment to recognize that this week is Veterans Day, and I'm going to let Alderman Ross tell us about the activity coming up on Wednesday. But I'd like to ask if any veterans we have in this room, or any people in military active service, if we could please stand up. Anybody who's... Thank you for your service and for your dedication to our country. Thank you, and thank you for standing up. I'd like to just let Alderman Ross mention the celebration we have on Wednesday.
Sure. The Arkansas State Veterans Ceremony will be held in North La Rock this year. It's the first time that North Rock has been able to hold this, and it's an honor for us to have that. It will be held November 11th, which is Wednesday, at 11 o'clock at Lehman Plaza, which is the plaza right outside the Lehman Library. In the event of rain, we'll go indoors into the community center, into the gym there, has a stage. Governor Hutchinson, it will be the guest speaker, and we hope that everyone comes out, rain or shine, to the ceremony to support our veterans and say thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to communications.
We need to go ahead and read Communication Number Four. This is a letter dated November 6th to City Clerk Whitby and members of the council. Dear Ms. Whitby and City Council members, this is to advise that I will be out of town on November 9th, 2015. Alderman Beth White will be presiding over the City Council meeting in my absence.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
We have Communications One, Two, Three, and Five left.
Just one question. Mr. Carter, you're going to go at length about Communication Number Five later?
I can go at length, however much you'd like to, Alderman Height, but if you want a brief explanation, I can give that to you right now.
Well, it was my knowledge that you were going to brief us on this Hoagie situation tonight, so do I...
That's at your pleasure.
You do it now, or you want...
That's at your pleasure and the pleasure of the council.
So do you want to pull Number Five?
Yeah.
What about One, Two, and Three?
Pardon me?
What about One, Two, and Three?
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the blanket motion for One, Two, and Three, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Number Five, do you want it by title or in its entirety?
You know, you can read it by title, and then I'll defer to Mr. Carter over there if he wants to answer any...
Okay, this is a letter from City Attorney C. Jason Carter to Montgomery Barnett, LLP. Attention Joseph P. Tainan. This is regarding a retention agreement.
There's a retention agreement with a law firm out of New Orleans and Baton Rouge that pertains to, you know, the arrangements that AIM was making to move the Hoagie to North La Rock. They just ran into a problem with the shipper. We didn't arrange that. AIM, of course, made all those arrangements, they're handling it, but when they ran into a problem with the shipper, they had retained this law firm. We're joined in it, not for the purpose of contracting, but just for the purpose of, you know, ensuring that the Hoagie is protected. It's a historic landmark, and we want to make sure that it's preserved for presentation. And I want the City Council to be aware that we were interested in the issue. I believe it will be resolved quickly.
Is there a motion?
No, I have a question. Is this an attorney? Okay, you said that AIM, this is their attorney, and we just sent this, or is this an attorney that's been retained by the city?
AIM has retained that attorney. We have joined that for the purposes of safeguarding the Hoagie.
Okay, so is there an additional cost then? We are paying these attorneys?
For, we may be cost-sharing our portion of ensuring that the Hoagie is safeguarded.
Okay, so the attorney fee is the only thing right now that we're basically on this?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how much it is?
No, but I don't believe that it's anything substantial. We have, City Council graciously gives us money in our budget where we can reach out to outside council, and we've got some that's outside of our norm, things that we don't deal with. We normally don't deal with maritime law, so that would be something that we'd reach out to help advise us and help us understand the issue.
Can I ask where the Hoagie is presently?
I believe it is in the vicinity of Houston.
Is it, I mean, is it still on the ship that...
The last I heard that it was, but actually while we're sitting here right now, it may not be. This issue may be resolved while we're talking.
Okay.
I just wanted the council to be aware of what was going on.
One more question, though. But currently, this is all funded by private donations, correct?
Yes.
As far as getting the Hoagie here?
Yes.
The city has not put any funds into it?
Well, similarly, if there was any, you know, obviously if they run into, you know, a shipping dispute or any kind of problem out there, then that'll have to be resolved. We're not a party to that resolution because those contracts were entered into by AIM.
Is there a motion to accept and file?
Move.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Seeing there's no presentations, we'll do public, citizen public comment on legislation, and we only have one. We have James Arndt for O-1587, so you'll not be speaking. Okay. Unfinished business?
O-1565, Mayor Smith.
Please hold that.
Okay. There's no consent agenda, so new business, R-15155, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution amending Resolution Number 8878 to clarify guidance for the development of solar power for customers of the North La Rock Electric Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Can we have Jason just comment on that, please?
Sure, and I'd also have to recognize Mr. Stare in the crowd. You know, we voted on this, we talked about it some at the last council meeting, about what our philosophy should be moving forward with solar. And Mr. Stare had some good comments for me afterwards. I think he showed up late to the meeting. He didn't have the opportunity to give his comments during the meeting last time, but it worked. I think it was a productive discourse where he said, you know, "You could read what you've written here in a certain way," and it, you know, "That really wouldn't work for solar power." And I said, "Well, that's not what we intended," and we just were able to tweak the language a little bit, to find language that is what we intended and I think is clearest for us to understand. Generally speaking, that we want people, if they're going to pursue solar power options, to be able to install with a capacity that meets their peak. That's what we want them to be able to do. You don't want merchant plants setting up in your footprint, but you do want them to be able to produce to meet their peak load.
Thank you, and appreciate your input, Mr. Stare. I value it very much.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-15156, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain rural properties in the city of North La Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
We'll have a public hearing?
Need a motion to...
Move for adoption.
Second.
Now. Public hearing. Seeing none?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Thank you.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinance is O-1587, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending North La Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Public Safety, to add a section on pedestrian restrictions in or near roadways. First reading.
Suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
There a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, what?
I would like Mr. Carter to explain this one also. These may all be yours tonight.
I wasn't the primary drafter of this ordinance, and so we might need to reach out to police or someone who was here who did more work on it. I'd feel more comfortable if they were commenting on it than I would. I hate to duck the bullet like that, but I feel like I should.
I had the same question of Becky in your office, and she said this was a section that was inadvertently left out when they rewrote or recodified the chapter, Public Safety Chapter, in the city code, and this one was accidentally left out, so that's the purpose, to get it back in.
Thank you. So it's basically something that we've already, I mean, we've already adopted. It's just that this was left out, correct? There's just a correction?
It was on the books for years and just got left out of the recodification.
Any more comments?
On the motion to adopt?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O-1588, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the non-uniformed employees' policy and procedure manual. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
There a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Wait, question? This is for the city attorney. On Exhibit B in the prohibited activity paragraph in line two, let me see if I can find that, and the change that you made, you have the network-capable connection port must conform to company security policies. Since this is a city ordinance, do we not make that to city security policies rather than company, or is that just a standard verbiage?
I think that the language that we're trying to adopt here has to do with security access by employees during work hours. So, you know, to the extent that we have Wi-Fi capabilities and things like that, we want those devices to be secure so that, you know, we're not having viruses backfed into the system.
Well, I'm not questioning the policy mine, it's just the verbiage that you're calling it a company rather than the city.
City is a company.
Oh, when you say, okay, I've got what you said, company security policies. Yeah, I mean, this is an adaptation from a generalized policy. We, I wouldn't have any objection to changing that. I think the city is a municipal corporation, but it's...
Swenix or Whitold.
Yeah, and it would, if, I'd call it a matter of taste. If you'd like to change it, it would have no effect of changing it.
Move on. Thank you.
Okay, on the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Okay, we'll have a public comment. We have three people who have signed up to speak. I don't know the order. James Arndt?
Actually, four, including Mr. Arndt.
There is a fourth one there. Thank you.
My name is James Arndt. Charlie, October the 21st, 23rd, I believe it was in 2010, you helped get our ordinance passed about closing a road. My understanding is from another council member, you didn't bother telling me there's a cemetery down there. Now, I have several questions and comments. Number one, how much money did Burkholt put in your account, Runfaldeman? How much money did he put in a former mayor's account? How much money did he put in Mr. Alderman Wycher's account? This isn't right, Charlie, and you're going to try to get your son in to set Murray's seat? We don't need two people from the same family in the same ward. I think the city can do something about it, and I'd like to see somebody other than David Ross and Linda Robinson help. They're not in that ward. It's not in their ward, but you and Murray sat back there with your thumbs up your nose, thought I was going to say something else, didn't you? I'll give you the next council meeting to try to help these people. They need access to that cemetery, and it isn't right what you pulled on the citizens or that particular group of people, have people buried there. I don't think it's very funny, and I tell you what, if I can keep your son out of office, believe me, I will. Have a good evening. Oh, by the way, Prosecutor Turner, you got my sign yet? Remember, 20 or 30? Remember? You going to get it?
That wasn't easy.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. James Humphrey?
Good evening to the City Council and others that are present. My name is James Humphrey, and I represent the Hope Needle Road Sewer Crop Project participants. Some of them that support this project stand with me at this time, and they have signed this petition. Pass it to the attorney, please. Please take a look at it. I'm here to request again that the City Council extend the sewer line in the Hope Needle Road community and to get the City Council's answer to this request. There is city sewer in this community. 6500 Hope Road has sewer. It's unfair for some to have sewer and not the others. Please take a look at the pictures that show city sewer in the area. The sewer line is needed in this community for the following reasons. The primary sewer system in the area are old. They have deteriorated. Studies show that the soil in the area did not perk well. We have had the sewer to back up. We've had some sewer units to cave in. Inadequate sewer system put toxin, that is poisonous chemicals into the environment, thus presenting a health threat to the residents, the citizens of North La Rock, and the entire environment. Extension of the sewer line in the community would eliminate this health threat and enable each resident to be able to get rid of sewer waste in the best and safest way possible. Cost of this project estimated to be around $108,241.10. Cost of this project, as you can see, is beyond the scope of North Rock citizens in this community. Therefore, we ask the City Council to help with this project. Please take a look at the cost estimate sheet. Again, the request is that the City Council extend the sewer line in Hope Needle Road community so that each household will be able to get rid of sewer waste in the best and safest way possible. Thank you very much for allowing me again to present this request to the City Council and ask for help in this matter.
I have a question. Mr. Humphrey, what is your current address?
It's 5837 North Cedar Street.
North Cedar Street, so you live in Ward Four? You currently reside in Ward Four?
Ah, yes, I guess if that address goes in Ward Four, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for him while he's up here.
Another question?
Okay, sorry.
If the sewer line was extended down this road, are the residents prepared to accept the cost of connecting from their residence to the sewer line? Because once that sewer line's in place, connectivity to the house is the responsibility of the property owner.
The cost estimate that we gave, I talked to North Rock Waste Water, and I was told that that costs include hook up, but if we have to, yeah, we are.
Just the case.
Yeah, the $108,000 does not include the residents connecting to the line. Does not.
On that petition, is every house on that petition, are those the ones that's requesting the sewer line?
Some of them are, some of them just are people that support the request.
Okay, because I'd like to know how many on there are ones. How many houses will actually be hooked on for this $108,000?
Actually, we have one, two, three, about four houses that doesn't have sewer at this time.
So it'd be four houses for the $108,000?
And it looks like four of the addresses on here are on that road.
Okay, that's why I was just curious, how many?
Your address is 6601 Hope Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that south of Interstate 40 and east of East Bethany Road?
Actually, to make it real easy for you, it's right behind Meta Park Elementary School.
That's Ward One.
Yes.
I think that'd be Ward One.
Yeah, Hope is.
In the Meta Park area.
Yes.
It's in Ward Two.
I mean, I mean, two, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We have studied this, and we've deliberated over this extensively with Mr. Humphrey and with Waste Water, and his estimates are correct, about $108,000. We don't have any Ward money. Sanitary sewers, I mean, Waste Water said they don't have the money, and that's where we are. I mean, we'd love to do it, but nobody has the funding to do it. I've explained, Mr. Humphrey, over the last two years, that we would love to do it, that we would research it, we would try to get grants, but it was not an overnight fix, and that we would do all we can to come to some resolution, but we haven't got there yet.
The only thing I was going to clear up when you said Ward Four a while ago.
He lives in Ward Four.
Alderman Ross, next.
Do we have any idea how much a service line would cost each of these four houses to put in from their house to the sewer line? Because that's the homeowner's responsibility. I've always understood that that's the homeowner's responsibility. I know I had mine replaced when it broke, was like around $3,000, so I didn't know how much these residents, if they realize how much it would cost for their service lines.
I would estimate anywhere from five to $10,000.
Per house, on the individual homeowner, correct?
Okay. Alderman Robinson?
I know it was suggested that they form an improvement district, and that is what has happened in other areas, is that an improvement district. Have you all looked at that?
Yes, ma'am, we have. That's not an option.
Why?
We're too small. We had one of our representative, actually, this, one of our representatives look into it, and she checked and asked about that, and said, "We're too small, can't do it."
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. My name is Dr. Tommy Piggy. I'm a gerontologist and a health educator and also a retired Army veteran. What I'm going to talk about is a little rationale, okay? It's obvious that this needs to be done or should be done, but let me just give you some rationale behind it. In terms of the sewer system there, in terms of, the city citizen of North La Rock should be afforded the opportunities of any citizen, and because of being located within the distance or nearby wetlands and the failing system in terms of sewer system and the drainage fields that may go out into various areas, the potential for contamination, and we want to talk about Giardia, we want to talk about E. coli, we want to talk about Cryptosporium, and all of those have been identified, not only through the health education channel, but by the Center for Disease Control and also for the entire Environmental Protections Agency. Because of the near wetland and also the potential for flooding and excessive rain that Low Rock, North La Rock generally have from time to time, a damaged drainage field can potentially contaminate not just those four individuals that we're considering, but the other individuals. And so when we compare the cost of what it might be to put that sewer system in, and we look at the potential cost for environmental contamination from sewage leaking out into the system, boil orders and so forth coming about, the cost is relatively insignificant for the harm that it may cause on citizens within North La Rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeffrey Miller. Three minutes, Mr. Miller.
My name is Jeffrey Miller, and we are, we own 6609 Hope Road, and we're planning on putting houses out there, and I have six kids with asthma, and I want the best for them. And man, if a city sewer is the best for them, that's what we are hoping for, because, like I said, we know that suction tanks get old and they deteriorate, and I don't want nothing to happen to my children because we don't have proper sewage, you know, proper sewer treatment of what we need to keep them safe. You know, it's a wetland over there where Hope Road is at, and if in any pipe come loose, a sewer come loose or anything, then it, you know, it's going to be harmful to our children, my children, they already got asthma, and I want the best for them. And what I believe, them having sewer, city sewer, will be best for them because they won't have to worry about, I won't have to worry about my kids falling into the suction tank or getting sick because it backed up. You know, when you got a bunch of kids, you use a lot of waste, and I don't know if the suction tank can take what all of us going to be doing, but if there's any way you could do it, God bless you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Ross. I'm so sorry.
I know I'm repeating what I said the last time, is, you know, I understand, and I, Waste Water, I respect their opinion on what they can do and what they can't do, but this is not the only area in the city that's on septic tank, and there's other areas that have a lot larger number of homes, too, that have not been able to get onto city sewer. And frankly, I've talked to some of them, and they enjoy having their septic tank because they're not paying that, what, $30, $35 a month, you know? So I just, I don't know, it's just that this isn't the only area in the city, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
And then there are some people who live near Hope Road or on Hope Road have stated to us they have septic tanks and they don't want city sewer.
Thank you. Any Aldermen, any comments?
I've got just an announcement real quick. The Lehman Library is exploring the opportunity to perhaps form a Friends of the Library organization, and... to perhaps form a Friends of the Library organization, and they are having an organizational meeting, information-type thing, at 3:00, and then again at 6:00 on Thursday at the Lehman Library. That's this Thursday, two different meetings, one at 3:00 and one at 6:00. Love to have you come out if that tickles your fancy.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.
Well, no, we're not. We need a motion.
Move to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Have a motion.
On the motion to adjourn, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And now we are.
Thank you.